It's 9:00 AM, so we're gonna go ahead and begin. We ask that you please silence all cell phone and pagers. Please remember, this is a public meeting, not a public hearing. We ask that you follow the rules of the courtroom decorum and the rules set forth for a public meeting. We're gonna start with a roll call. Commissioner Yauer.
Here.
Commissioner Rosales.
Here.
Judge Shaw here. Commissioner Shindel.
Here.
Commissioner Hummel.
Here.
Ms. Luna with the county clerk's office.
Here.
Please stand and join in some open prayer. Next standing to the pledge of allegiance for that. Heavenly Father, we ask that you make the best decisions regarding County today. We ask that you bless our troops wherever they may be and that we move forward in a progressive motion. In your name we pray, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for Number five on the agenda is citizens to be heard. Lisa, did anybody bring any forms to you?
I have two, Carter.
Go ahead, Sue.
Good morning.
Good morning, Sue.
I just wanted to quickly mention that this afternoon, a group of us will be going to Austin, to Austin, to meet with the Texas Historical Commission and present, this is a public hearing, and we'll be presenting our case regarding receipt of Phase Two of the Round Seven grant application. So this is a public hearing where the Architectural Committee of the Texas Historical Commission will be listening to all the counties that come and give their presentation and their reasons for why they think they should be, you know, receiving grant money from Round Seven. So I'm encouraged to know that Carl Hummel will be attending, and Pete, I believe you're coming, and Pete's going to join us. We'll give a presentation on the status of our courthouse project, and I'm very pleased to be able to report to them that our courthouse is vacated and that M.J. Boyle has started on Phase One, and we will be utilizing that the Round Six grant that we received very quickly since that work is underway. So I wanted to share with all of you, so you would know what we would be doing this afternoon, the handout that I have for the committee members, and I just wanted you to know what information we were providing. And again, you know, thanks to Carl and Pete for attending, and you know, we wanna, you know, put our best foot forward and just assure them that we are ready to receive the grant and will move forward in an expeditious and very responsible manner. So I'll share this handout with you, and you can read it later, but this is what we will be presenting this afternoon.
Thank you. Thank you, Sue. Mr. Bustman, microphone's working?
Yes. Oh, I didn't turn it off. I mean, the recorder is working. You had to push the button there.
Can you see this button look off?
Well, the lights will go off all the time.
There it went.
Get those lights off.
I don't want to designate anybody. The next item on the agenda is reading it for a minute. I believe I read them, and I didn't have any. I don't think it was one of your questions, or something. Just your, just the hand of your grasp. Did any of you have any questions? If you're done reading them, just let me know. Carl.
No, I've already read them.
Number seven on the agenda is to review and correct members' court minutes for the month of December 2011, and motion to accept minutes after review and/or connection, correction. I make a motion that we accept the minutes as presented.
I'll second it.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that was one to be, I made the motion, who seconded that? You did. So, and everybody is for, no opposition. Number eight on the agenda is to discuss approve/disapprove appointing Alfred Pavellik, the entire Constitutional County Judge, and a citizen of Karnes County to act for Judge Barbara Niver Shaw in docket call criminal hearings and probate hearings in her absence. This is judicial duties only, this has nothing to do with administrative duties. One of y'all would do that, pro temp would do that. But I will be out some days due to some family issues, and I can fall for it to 15 setting days myself, but just in, I would rather you guys know where I'm at, what I'm doing, just to stop any concern that may arise from the fact that I might be missing from a judicial day. If you have any questions, I'll answer them.
You gotta make a motion, somebody.
I'll move that we pardon Alfred Pavellik, Judge in Athens, and the county judge.
I'll second it.
For the whole year?
For the rest of this year.
For the rest of this year.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. It was, James was, when Pete made the motion, James seconded it, and there was five, all four, no against. Trying to help themselves, it's hard to take minutes the first time.
I understand.
Number nine is to discuss approve/disapprove appointing August Serna to the Economic Development Board to fill the Karnes County vacant, we have a vacancy on the Economic Development Board with Rachel. Our county rep has decided to back out and do something else, and August Serna was willing to take the job, and she's just a really motivated person, and I thought she'd be good for the job, and so I had talked to her about it.
Who was the rep that stepped down?
Sylvia Keter Garza.
I'll make a motion to appoint August Serna to the Economic Development Board to fill the Karnes County vacancy.
I'll second it.
James first, Carl second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oh, Tracy second?
I think you did.
Okay, Tracy's second. That's five, four, none against. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Number 10 on the agenda is to discuss approve/disapprove Karnes County Emergency Management Plan Resolution prepared by Emergency Management Coordinator Shelby Dugnick and Karnes County Judge, which is myself, and allow me to execute if it's approved. There's a copy of that in here. I believe I put y'all a copy of that in here, didn't I?
Yes, I did.
I don't think I put me a copy of it in here.
Do you need one?
I just need one, did y'all read it? And what this is, is I wrote this resolution, and it's just the Local Government Code, Section 418, 102, with the help of Shelby. Shelby's here somewhere. Shelby's read this, and he was here yesterday, and we went over it. And it just says that the Local Government Code addresses the county program, so we have Section A and B in there, and we discussed where Shelby's the Emergency Management Coordinator. He gets the full itens from DPS, I'm sure Chief DeBose gets them too, they have the little Emergency Management Center there in Kennedy. So when DPS contacts Shelby, Shelby always contacts me, like we had the fire the other night, Shelby was out there and called me. And the former police department next to City Hall is actually, and Shelby, you might be able to explain it better if you want to, if you'd like to come up, it's a, it can, it can take over the full capacity of the Sheriff's Department and do everything that the Sheriff's Department does in case of an emergency.
We, we have two, we have an emergency operations center set up in Kennedy. What started, when the new annex was built, Judge Kennel at the time wanted the district court to act as the emergency operations center. Well, over time, that kinda got pushed away, so Duane and I did the city of Kennedy and grants that we received from OLM Security. We created a emergency operations center at the old police station in Kennedy, at the old fire station, rather, and part of that was developed into this where the police station was at one time, and currently houses Judge, the judge over there. And what we did was, we created a, through Duane's help, we set up a communication system there where if we would lose the sheriff's office radios and stuff, we could go over to the emergency operations center there and actually continue to operate the county through there. It's set up with TVs and Scott fax machines, and it's got all kind of capabilities. We have to bring this management team into the county to take care of something big for us, they could work out of there. Only thing about that area is that we would limit access to people that only would have, it'd be credentialed, the only ones that could be, probably would be the judge and elected mayors and certain elected officials could come into the county, into that emergency operating center and assist in whatever needs we would have to do. The concern was that where, if judge or anybody would need to brief the public on anything, we would have to have another area for them to do. I think Judge Shaw, you said you wanted to use this area here, or?
Yes, sir, because I have this area and we have that area out there, we have that just big area if we need it.
To, for the public to be briefed on anything like we did during the hurricane, the public could come in and sit down, we could discuss whether what we're doing or whatever we need to do, or if we would have to have a press release for some reason, we could have it here. The, and that could be done anywhere, it could be done, this is gonna be the main location, but it could be done in district courtroom, it could be done at a site, at a school, at a city hall, just so the public could agree to do it as well. And Camel Radio, they're gonna be our main one, main thing to get to people out, in case we have to make something quick, they can get on radio, make a notification, they've been good about helping us get, get the word out on certain, certain incidents that we've had here lately, and those have been rig fires. A lot of it's just, now, like you know, I said spontaneous combustion, they've got all of these tanks and their exhaust, and they heat up and catches all fire. That's about it. And the emergency operation thing, yeah, the annex, it's got the communication, pretty well spells all that out.
And Shelby, you just pretty much read the resolution without looking at it, you did, so that's, that's what it says, it's, it's just to let everybody know where we're at, what we're doing, and that Camel will be able to go live with us if something happens to inform the public, just at any area of the county that can turn on a radio.
Mrs. Green chopping incident?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve Karnes County Emergency Management Plan Resolution prepared by Emergency, Emergency Management Coordinator Shelby Dugnick and Karnes County Judge Barbara Niver Shaw, and allow County Judge to execute resolution. I'll second it.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The first was Carl, the second was Pete, it was five, zero, no opposition. Thank you, Shelby.
Thank you, Carl.
Thanks, Chief, thank you guys for coming, Trini, we'll see y'all, oh, you're staying. Sorry, Trini, I wasn't trying to kill you.
Sorry.
Number 11 on the agenda, ah, y'all are gonna kill me, but discuss approve/disapprove the multiple use agreement between Karnes County and the state of Texas regarding the waystation, and allow the county judge to execute if approved. I put that back on here. The reason it's back on here is we had agreed, remember last time, to accept it with amendments, that there was some stuff that we were gonna change, and that we were gonna take out, it's back in your package. And the reason that it's back in here is because I put the exhibits, I have all the exhibits now, the language in here was statutory, they won't let us change it. So the stuff that we were gonna take out, and I know Jim's in here somewhere, that's the, all the drawings are attached, look. Mr. Bustman, I showed you these drawings. All these drawings are attached, and you'll see that, that it shows what, what they're going to do, and then it's got it broken down in the back, of the stuff that they're gonna do for us and what it's gonna cost us, which is, you'll see, where the cost is, the amount is zero, 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 it's zeroed out. But in the actual body of this thing, it says that we're going to pay for it, which is not correct, but it's statutory language for any multi-use agreement that they do. So they do the attachments to let us know what we are and what we are not paying for. And so it's not gonna be amended, and I didn't feel comfortable finding one when we said that we were gonna amend something, and it wasn't amended, you guys need to know it wasn't amended, that we, that we were just attaching the exhibits.
I'll make a motion to approve the multiple use agreement between Karnes County and the state of Texas regarding the waystation, and allow County Judge to execute.
I second that motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? There's no opposition, so this Carl and Barbara, five, zero. Motion carried. Number 12 on the agenda is to discuss approve/disapprove authorizing change order number two, which increases Phase One contract sum by $25,153.88 from $772,000 to $797,153.88 as a result of the delayed start of the project for courthouse restoration, and allow the county judge to execute if approved. And that's Carl.
Okay, I don't know if I handed, I might have handed all my copies out. See it in there. Basically what it is, is when we approved that contract to M.J. Boyle, that was over a year ago, and through the course of a year, materials and whatnot went up, and it amounts to about 3%, which is right in line with inflation rate, and I think is quite reasonable. I, I mean, if it, if it had been me, I probably would've just gone and found another job somewhere else, but anyway, that's pretty much where it's at. I mean, we delayed the project a year, and he was waiting and waiting and waiting, and costs of materials and whatnot is going up. Any questions?
I, I do have one question. My only concern is, as I said, it's delayed, we couldn't move into the annex, I mean, we couldn't move, we couldn't move out of the courthouse, but they told us that they were working behind the scenes, and that nothing was delayed, that they were removing stuff, and I know that we had the bond election, but when did, when did they move into the annex? When did everybody actually get to move in? Was anybody, and it was in October.
Well, the fact of the matter is, we did sign a contract over a year ago. Now, what the circumstances are, I mean, if you wanna point the finger at somebody, if you wanna point it at the contractor, I, I really don't think that you can make that argument, because I don't see that it's his fault.
Well, I don't see that it's his fault, but I don't see that it's our fault either.
Okay, whose fault is it, then?
I'm just, but I'm just asking, I don't see that it's our fault either, and I don't, that just seems like, this says that it's a change order, okay, and to me, a change order would mean something would be different, that there would be change. This isn't increase the contract without change.
Okay, well, you're pretty familiar with the oil field, I think, since your husband works in the oil field. Now, if he bought, say, 50,000 gallons of diesel a year ago, and signed a contract, don't you think in a year's time it might go up?
Well, but what I'm saying is, just this change order-
Yeah, but he would've avoided it for the same price, he signed a contract.
This is, this says change order, this is not a change.
If it was five dollars a gallon, he'd have signed a contract for three. When it's supposed to be delivered at a certain date, if it's not delivered on that date that you signed the contract for, anything beyond that date on the contract, you know what I'm saying? You have to, well, run the math.
Didn't we talk to him, and they said it was fine, that they would go ahead and wait at the same amount?
They did, they said in here that, that the contract amount would increase, because actually, Mr. Bustman asked them if they wanted to rebid, and they said it wasn't necessary, it was not going to be an increase.
I remember when you asked them if they wanted to rebid, and they said, no, it would remain the same.
Let me remind you something else. The statute does not allow you to do, the statute is, VTC Local Government Code 252.0, you're going to have a copy of the statute. Besides that, what you're doing here is you're subsidizing the contractor. You are raising, they're asking you to raise their contract bid because they're going to lose money. Well, I'm sorry, but if you start that as a precedent, and getting ready to do any of the other work here, it's going to be the same thing over and over and over again. My suggestion to you is, please don't do that. We have enough of an obligation, plus I think it's illegal, plus you don't have the money in your budget in the way. Where's it gonna come from? So you need to just turn this down, and you don't need to-
The contract was 772,000, and we have 309,000 that we put from our budget into the project, so it's a total of 900,000.
What's that got to do with it?
Well, my question is not budget, my question is change, I don't see change. I just need, go ahead, Sue.
What has changed specifically is the start date. The original start date was, that is, and that's the only thing that's changed, but it is a change. It was originally scheduled for March 10th, and then the new one, I think they actually began, that's 2010, and they actually began in November of 2011 with our motion to proceed. The 25,000 came, what M.J. Boyle did was, he went back and he canvassed each of his subcontractors and asked them, you know, he told them, he said, you know, "We have delayed this over a year, and will there be any increase or change in your estimates?" And so what, he only got, like, I think there were six different subcontractors that increased slightly their cost, and this is a very standard thing to be done when there's a change in the start date. And most people will agree that if you have a $775,000 contract, that's almost a quarter of a million dollars, a very slight increase of 25,000 is very reasonable, and I see that our contractor, M.J. Boyle, has been, been more than reasonable and accommodating to us, and if we were to go out and rebid this, the cost would be much higher than 25,000.
Not necessarily.
Okay, well, wait a second, because we might even start the public hearing here, but thank you, Sue, but my, I guess my other issue is, they started a job with a contract, they've already started this contract, and now they wanna change it after they started. A change, this is not a change order, this is an increase.
Judge, the project was delayed a whole year.
But it wasn't, Carl, because Luana was still paying them.
I went to Commissioner's Court before I was a commissioner, and I told them the day they signed this contract, it was premature, they couldn't start this, couldn't do this contract, they knew the day they signed it, it was not gonna start. I told them that that day in court, in whatever it was, December of 2010, and they signed the contract, and all was willing to accept it, and they signed it. They knew they couldn't start and get it done in time, but they signed that contract. Now, we sent them a notice to proceed November 18th, and they were anxious to get in here and start, they didn't tell us anything about this extra cost. They were anxious to get in there next week and start.
Pete, well, the day they signed it, how would they have known about any?
I told them, I told them it wasn't gonna start that time, that they couldn't get into the housing that time.
How did you know that?
It doesn't matter, it doesn't matter at all, they signed the contract, the contract was legally signed, they cannot get it raised because they're gonna lose money. You bite the bullet, that's what contractors do, and y'all-
But the whole, the whole point of the whole being, if there was a change order and they were making a change, they're just increasing their fees.
They just don't want, they want you to pay their property.
You know, this is just one more deal, I mean, you, and you, and you. Y'all are against this project since very beginning.
Look at, look at what they want to increase for, $900 for travel, they didn't travel down here and check this thing every week.
How do you know that, Pete?
How do you know they did?
Stop, stop.
Project manager, 1746, we paid them right through the contract for service of this job, $475 to $975 a month, every month they sent a bill to Karnes County, they've been paid, but they want to increase it 1746, they've been paid every month, that money's already in there, they got it. All right, another project manager, $240. Masonry restoration here, they haven't restored any masonry or anything, that's just labor on, on it, whatever it's gonna do, $5,865 masonry restoration. Sheen metal roofing copper, copper has gone down in the last six months, so-
Pete, how do you know they haven't already bought the copper when they got the contract?
Then they're really being a crook.
Mr. Bustman, wait. Can I say something? No.
I don't know that they have, I don't know.
But the whole-
You're facing a lot of accusations against the contractor, you don't know anything about them.
But this is a change order, and there's no change to what they're proposing to do.
Again, the only change is the change in the start date, and again, the amount of money seems very reasonable, and my main concern is that at this point, if we don't approve it, it's going to, again, jeopardize the completion of Phase One, it is going to appear, as we've talked this afternoon, to the-
Ms. Carter, it's not a public hearing.
I agree, why, why is she allowed to talk?
Now, if you start doing that, everybody else is gonna stand up and start doing it, and it becomes discrimination, if we let one person do it and we don't let everybody else do it. But this is where we're at, it's either, I mean, there is no, I don't, I think we've been very open about the fact that we want them to go ahead, they started, and then they came in with a change of contract, and I just don't think that, that's kinda deceptive for the citizens, when they stood in here and said, that day that we were all in here, I think Mr. Hunt was in here, I think M.J. Boyle was in here, I know Mr. Fisher was, that was the day that George was down, things got real loud, they stood right here and said nothing would change, and the contract was not gonna change, Mr. Bustman said if it's gonna change, rebid it, and they said there's not a reason to rebid it, that they were still going to go by this. And then once we said, look, we're ready to go, the bond passed, I mean, we were all thinking we were going in a positive direction, and we're all in the same role, everything's great, now we want more money. That's how I see that.
After we had the grant, y'all decided to go out for a bond election to spend the money. So now you wanna build a jail, you gonna go out for a bond election?
There is, that is not on the agenda, and you're out of line.
Okay, well, you don't mind spending money suing the county treasurer, spending $30,000.
That is enough, you are out of line, sir, sir, sit down, you're out of line, Commissioner. We're here to make a vote, and I'm sorry, but I feel like this change order is wrong, our legal counsel's telling us it's probably illegal.
How do you call that legal counsel?
You have no right, Commissioner, he does not sit here and do that to you, you have no right.
Oh, yeah.
But I make a motion that we disapprove authorizing the change order number two, which increases the Phase One contract by $25,153.88 as a result of the delayed start, because I do not feel like there was a delayed start. Luana was still making payments, Luana was still making payments to them, and they told me they were working behind the scenes. If they weren't-
Correct that statement, Commissioner's Court was authorizing payments.
Well, yes, we were authorizing payments, because they were still working behind the scenes. Yes, ma'am, they were authorizing them, but we were still making payments. We never stopped making payments to Fisher and Heck, actually, Pete brought in a bill not long ago that we paid. So that's my motion.
Well, you know, I have nothing against the restoration, that's what the people wanted, that's what, you know, I'll back that up 100%, but on this here, I have to second it, and because they did stand here and said that it was not gonna change, the amount was not gonna change, and if we do go ahead and start right now, giving just more money out like that, it's gonna go throughout the whole project, so I second that motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
That's gonna be a motion by Shaw, seconded by Rosales, four, four, one against, Commissioner Hummel against. Number 13 is to discuss approve/disapprove lease agreement with DeWitt Pope and Son, Great America Leasing Corporation, for copier for adult probation, community service, and supervision, and authorize the county judge to execute the agreement at a term of 60 months at $109 a month, adult probation reimburses Karnes County for the lease cost on a quarterly basis. That's Luana.
We have always provided a copier for the adult probation through our contracts. Previously, it was with Xerox. I'm requesting a change to DeWitt County, so DeWitt Pope said we'll have all copiers through the same provider, and it is a cheaper rate we were previously paying, I believe it was 126 a month, but adult probation does reimburse us for the lease cost.
I make a motion that we approve the lease agreement with DeWitt Pope and Son, Great America Leasing Corporation, for copier for adult probation, community service, and supervision, and authorize the county judge to execute the agreement. The term is 60 months at $109 a month, adult probation reimburses Karnes County for the lease cost on a quarterly basis.
I'll second it.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It was made by Shaw, seconded by Rosales, five, zero, no opposition. Number 14 is to discuss, consider, add effective date of health insurance, insurance effective 90 days from date of hire, or first of the month following 90 days, and that's by.
When we had Humanna in the past, what they would let us do with the billing is, if you became effective, if your effective date was from the first through the 15th of the month, we paid the full premium, the 16th through the rest of the month, it was considered a freebie, and we didn't have to pay the premium. When we went to principal, principal did not have that policy, didn't matter what day of the month you became effective, you were effective the first of the following month. Well, Humanna will let us do the middle of the month, whenever it is, but it's on a prorated basis, or we go to the first of the month and do the, do it that way for reconciliation purposes, it would be easier if we just went and made it effective the first of the following month. That wasn't a decision I really wanted to make with Commissioner's Court, someone's effective date. So instead of becoming effective September 5th, it would be October 1st, if your 90 days was September 5th.
But is that kinda like, can I ask you just a question, is that kinda like unfair to the, I know it's easier for us, but is that kind of unfair, like they'll go like an extra 25 days without insurance?
Right. And I kinda thought that, too. That wasn't a decision I really wanted to make with Commissioner's Court, some of the effective date. So instead of becoming effective September fifth, it would be October first, if your ninety days was September fifth.
But is that kind of like, can I ask you just a question, is that kind of like unfair to the, I know it's easier for us, but is that kind of unfair, like they'll go like an extra twenty-five days without insurance?
Right, and I kind of thought that too, but I didn't want to...
I would rather them get, personally, I mean, if it's ninety days, I'd rather they get their benefit within the time that they're supposed to get their benefit, because God forbid something did happen.
Right, right.
They would have their benefits in place.
And that's why we have a contract set up now, is ninety days effective of the date, and but when we got our billing rep, she was kind of, "Well, don't have to prorate it," so that's why I put on the agenda for, whichever way y'all want us to do.
What do you think?
I think it's fair to do it ninety days from the date of hire, but for easier purposes, first of the following month, so...
What kind of error on the side of the employee, I mean, she's just going to have to help you out with that one, even though...
Well, we just prorate it to how much it is per day.
I think that's fair, what do you think? What do y'all think? I'd rather have their benefit.
Yeah, because if you come effective September fifth, you got to wait till...
So it's actually becomes like a hundred and fifteen days versus month days, and that's kind of just not fair.
Okay.
I make a motion that the effective date of health insurance be ninety days following, not the first of the month.
I second it.
That's Carl?
Yes.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
The motion made by Shaw, seconded by Hummel, five, zero, all four. Number fifteen is to discuss approve/disapprove the special warranty deed on real estate property as described. The Kennedy Lot Part Seven, Lot Ninety-four, Kennedy, Texas, being point twenty-three acres, is shown in the sheriff's deed dated October first, two thousand and one, recorded in volume seven sixty-three, page eight hundred and thirty-three of deed records in Karnes County, Texas, that's account number R C five five one zero. Kennedy Lot, two-thirds of the eighth, Lot Ninety-four, Kennedy, Texas, being point two seven five acres, is shown in the sheriff's deed dated October second, two thousand and one, recorded in volume seven sixty-three, page eight thirty-three, deed records, Karnes County, Texas, account number R C four three oh six five, and allow the county judge to execute. What this is, I had it on the agenda last time, but we didn't spell out the exact description. And this is, I think the school has actually sent me this, that they were, they needed to sell, it was, see, by the Kennedy Independent School District, I didn't make y'all a copy, because I made you one last time, so I didn't make the other one. But they're just, they just need our permission, and that's, that's what's being sold by the school district. And we had to have it on here exact, and last time, I just put, I think last time I put special warranty deed, and I didn't define my, my lots, right, Ms. Frankie, is that what I did?
Yes, that's correct.
I'll make a motion to approve and allow the county judge to execute.
I'll second it.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, it was, motion made by Rosales, seconded by Schindel, motion carries, five, zero, no opposition. Number sixteen is to discuss approve/disapprove a bond for Hilda Castro, the J P number four, and the author Carol, Carol Squeezy, she's not here, she's in training this week, I mean, no, conference, excuse me, conference this week. Mrs. Castro is the one that we appointed to replace Mr. Garza, and she just needs to be bonded.
And I have the copy of the bond for execution.
Do you? Good.
I'll make a motion to approve the bond for Hilda Castro, J P number four.
I'll second it.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, the motion was made by Rosales, seconded by Schindel, five, zero. Number seventeen is acknowledgement on record that the San Antonio Food Bank will be at St. Paul's Lutheran Church, located at four oh eight South Davidson Street in Karn City, Texas, on January sixth, two thousand and twelve. Distribution will begin at ten thirty. I put that on the agenda, just to acknowledge that the food bank will be back, and that's the one that we pay for. It's going to be at St. Paul's, we were in Kennedy, we went to Fall City, now we're in Karn City, so obviously, Randy will be next, but this time, we're going to be in Karn City at St. Paul's. Distribution will start at ten thirty a.m. If you have any questions, Joyce, feel free to call, okay, I'm just acknowledging it. Number eighteen is a tax collector's report.
Year-to-date collection, our fiscal year beginning October one, for the county, one million, one hundred and thirty-one thousand, two hundred and seventy-one dollars and twenty-four cents. Delinquent collection, eighteen thousand, five hundred and eleven dollars and four cents. Road and Bridge Special Collection, year-to-date, one hundred and fifty-four thousand, nine hundred and eighteen dollars and seventy-nine cents. Delinquent collection, one thousand, six hundred and nineteen dollars and seventy-eight cents. For the Rural Fire Emergency District, ninety thousand, five hundred and seventy-one dollars and forty-one cents. The delinquent collection, one thousand, thirty-four dollars and fourteen cents.
Thank you, Ms. Frankie. The next one is, discuss examine approve/disapprove treasurer's report, that's a bye.
She's going to give you this one.
We have, I have bond over and compared both of our reports, and they match. So, I don't know, if you've got any time to look at it, let me know if I'm moving too fast.
The only thing is, I did put a, a new report this month on the interest earned for this past quarter and year.
What page do you have, Bye?
Uh, it's like one, the third or fourth page, I think, Barbara, fourth page, probably. If I staple mine the same way as yours, it says treasurer's report, interest earned, fourth quarter and year end.
Oh, I see it, thank you, it's the third page of our package, the way you ran it.
And if you'll note on the debt obligations, on the prison site, next month is our last payment for that month, on February twelfth, I'm sorry, February fifteenth, so we're going to have a note burning party outside.
I make a motion that we approve the treasurer's report as presented.
I'll second it.
Made by Shaw, seconded by Hummel, Rosales, who's on y'all? Made by Shaw, seconded by Hummel, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, five, zero, no opposition. I need you guys to sign this, we all, look at page three here. The next one is payment of bills, that's Luana.
You have a packet, a copy of it in your packet, I just gave Barbara the official copy. Some things to highlight on page one. Bill for four thousand, three hundred and ten dollars to Texas CompuFix, that is for moving the sheriff's department from the courthouse to the new annex.
I'm sorry, Luana, where we're, outside of that.
On page, on page one, one, two, three, four, fifth, entry to Texas CompuFix, for four thousand, three hundred and ten dollars. On page three, about two-thirds of the way through, there is a dispersment to Tyler Technologies for the amount of thirteen thousand, three hundred and eighty-nine dollars. That is the annual maintenance and support cost for the tax assessor collector's office. The county auditor, county treasurer, and sheriff's maintenance is paid on a quarterly basis, but the tax office is required to be paid on a annual basis.
All these other things to Tyler Technologies, they're just monthly bills?
Quarterly.
Four nine five, four nine six, there's four charges to, right, four thousand dollars.
Quarterly. Quarterly. The, where it says client support, is that quarterly, or is that how many times they call for the support, or?
No, that's a quarterly maintenance support fee, we do not get calls or charges for individual calls. And the cycle bills throughout are workers' comp charges by different departments or funds, that is a quarterly charge also.
I make a motion that we pay bills as presented.
I'll second it.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, made by Shaw, seconded by Rosales, five, zero, no opposition. Lisa, on this that page right here, on this one, your bills, you may need to sign them. Do I, I think it's y'all in here, here we go, start down here and pass it down, please. Number twenty-one is going to be a report of fees, fines, fees, fines, and money collected by the following departments, county clerk, district clerk, county attorney, justices of the peace, the juvenile department, special projects. On the county clerk, Lisa left, I mean, Carol left this for me, her total for the month was fifty-one thousand, one hundred and eight dollars and twenty-five cents. Hot checks, Mr. Busman, you want to do it yourself?
December, we collected two thousand, eight hundred and seventy-five dollars, sixty-six cents for the merchants. We collected four hundred and sixty dollars, forty-six cents for county, uh, court fees. Total is fifty-five thousand, seven hundred and eighty-four, to date, sixteen cents, last year, to date, was forty-eight thousand, eight hundred and thirteen dollars and forty-one cents. So we collected four, it's last year that we did the report.
Robbie turned in her report, did I make y'all a copy of it? It was for November and December, sometimes after I run the copies, I give them to all of y'all, and I didn't, unless I left them on the table in there, but I can get them and follow them, do y'all see them in there, did I leave Robbie's report out? Robbie did record, record report for November, and it is in there, it's in there with Daisy's, and I bet I left them, I left them. I think I left them in there laying on the table.
Or you want me to go get?
Well, you, you know what, Bye, that's it, Pete has one, thank you though so much, is Daisy's in there too? Do you have Daisy's also?
Yes.
I gave Pete my folder to look at. On Robbie's, thank you, Bye, I think they're both here though, and there's extras on there if you need one.
No, obviously, they didn't put the commissions.
Oh, okay, no, we're good, I think, thank you though, thank you very much. On November, I really don't know if, if, you know, for me to read Robbie's report, she has it circled, it says November, and it says civil report seventy-eight, nineteen oh three, and that's what she gave, it looks like that's what she gave to Bye, so I'm going to think that that's what this means. And for November, for criminal fees, it says that she collected six thousand, twenty dollars in oh one, and that she wrote that in forty cheques to Bye, or that's how she has it marked out here. I don't understand each department, how they function, so... Civil on Robbie's is the same thing, she has five thousand, five oh eight thirty-four circled for December, and... And for criminal fees in December, she has six thousand, five hundred and ninety dollars and ninety-three cents. And if I misread that, I'm just reading circled numbers, because I'm going to assume that's what she wanted me to read. Is that right, Bye?
Yes.
Did I get the right numbers? Thank you. And then on Daisy's, Daisy's monthly report, um... It just shows, I guess, her total cases pending the first of the month, and her inactive cases, and, um... Kind of give us this so they can keep up, like, when they come in here, I guess, at budget time, and let us know what's going on, they'll show us all what they've done. And she collected for the month of December, thirty-nine thousand, ninety-five dollars. Is that right, Bye, am I reading that right?
That's right, yeah. And it was a lot for her.
If y'all want to see that, pass it around, look at it.
That's just for December.
That's just for December. Okay. And the juvenile department, I mean, uh, Lima did not leave me a bill. The sheriff left a report for his racial profiling, I think that's the report that he turns in once a month, that he adds on reports. I don't know if he, does he usually read this, Mr. Busman, do we file it for just for public view?
That's all I've ever seen.
Just file it for public view? And special projects, Ms. Chester, I saw you here, there you are.
I'm just going to stand here, sorry.
You're fine.
For the month of December, the chair makes development applications, we received nine for a total of two hundred and twenty-five. We're on-site sewage facility permits for the month of December, permits total of three thousand, seven hundred. Inspector's portion is one thousand, four hundred and forty, T C Q's portion out of that is eight, Karnes County receives two thousand, one hundred and eighty.
Thanks, Ms. Chester. Is that it? Did I get everybody? Anybody else in here have a report to make that I missed you? Number twenty-two is a report from Road and Bridge, we'll start with Jeff. I talked to Jeff yesterday before he starts his report, y'all have in here a couple of letters and some emails that I got, that I wanted to share with you guys regarding people concerned about potholes in their road, regarding, um... Mommy, you, you can read them, I won't read them to you, but there's a, I shared them with Jeff, that they, there's a concern about the potholes, smaller vehicles that are being damaged by the potholes and the complaints, and Carl was in here with me the other day, and we had some people concerned about dust and potholes, and, I mean, we know our roads are in extremely, extremely poor shape. So, and then we have an email regarding that, what, trash, Road and Bridge, other things. So I shared all these with Jeff, I've been talking with Jeff about all that, and Jeff has started talking to some engineers regarding bond and stuff, but I'll let him explain that to you in his report, because I referred all of them to him.
As well as speeding the right of the, I mean, a lot of these, a lot of these people are going into excess of fifty, sixty miles an hour now.
We need deputies on our county roads, I mean, people are begging us for help, we're going to have to help them. I mean, if they're begging us for Road and Bridge, they're begging us for deputies, they're begging, and we, we need to meet their needs. And I mean, I know that all falls back to you, because people say, "Well, Jeff, they're speeding down our road, Jeff, they're tearing up our road." And Jeff and I were on the phone a long time yesterday, so...
The biggest complaint we do have on the county roads is the oil field traffic and the speed that they travel with. I don't, I don't control the speed, I just put signs out and they run them over and, and everything else, we, I, I'm not going to be chasing those guys. It's enough problems trying to keep up with hands, so, at the end of the month, we, Homer Reas has twenty-nine years of service for Karnes County retired, Scott Katara was with us for a little over nine days, he, he up and went to school, he studied to be a police officer, so he quit the county and went, went to study to be a police officer. So that made us short, shorthanded. I got some older gentlemen that are coming in, talking to us about part-time work, I, I, I'm going to sit down with Bye on that, on, on part-time, I don't know what we need to do with those guys, we don't, they don't need insurance, so, just the fact that they'll, they'll work for us a couple of days a week.
Your auditor's raising her hand back here, so...
First of all, there is not money budget for part-time positions in the current budget, they're only for full-time positions, so we'll have to have an agenda item to allow transfer of funds.
Transfer of funds, okay, well, since we can't find full-time help, and our biggest deal is just trying to get enough people out there so I can run the, the main generators when we need to run the blades to blade the road, because that is, that's hurting us the most to try to get these roads smoothed up after the oil fields are turned up. A lot of the companies are helping us, they get to the point, the roads are getting bad, and they call me and say, "Hey, when you going to blade the road?" I said, "Well, y'all tore it up, y'all need to fix it," and they, most of them respond pretty good to us, they're real good about it. I had an oil company call me on County Road three oh one, which is up in James's Precinct there, and it's a dead end road in Helena. They're going to put an oil well out on the backside of the road, and they asked me when I can haul the road out so they can put their rig in there, and I said, "Well, you putting the rig back there, you need to put the road in," and so they will fix the road. County Road three sixty, the people that live down that road had no Christmas holiday this shirt, this past year, because they couldn't get in, they couldn't get out. The road, the only way the traffic was brought into there, the oil field, they drug their trucks in, they drug their trucks out with, with dozers, that road is totally destroyed. The company is buying us new pipes, they will not do the work, I'm doing the work on it, we got caught with rain again, that road is all tore up. We're, we're trying to build it up, road is not wide enough, we're bringing material in, trying to widen the road out. We're going to spend some money on that road, trying to get it widened out, the oil company is going to spend approximately about a hundred and ninety to two hundred thousand dollars for material and pipes, plus our county labor of putting everything in. County Road three oh one, approximately, the oil company will spend about a hundred and thirty thousand dollars on that road just for material, and that road is approximately about a mile and a half maybe long, so that's, that's a lot of money, a little over a mile and a half, so that's a lot of money that's going to help us, dead end roads or not, we still appreciate the help from the oil companies and stuff to help us on that. We're looking at a, at a plan, I told you all about a plan of working on these roads. We're looking at a, at a plan. I told you all about a plan of, uh, working on these roads. We got the money, uh, the bond passed, and, uh, I've always stated that I want, uh, what my opinion was, but I wanna look at your commissioners, and I wanna input from y'all, which way y'all wanna go. My deal is, I wanna take and fix all the school bus routes in the county first, which is essential, to get our kids in and out of school. Number two, we're gonna attack all the roads where you have high populations living, and then we'll increase ourselves, start going down on, on improving the roads where the, uh, the senior citizens live at and the bigger popularities of people, because these roads, uh, all companies say they're gonna run here, they're running everywhere. Those there, they said they're not gonna run. They're running and they're destroying these roads, because they're just, they can't handle the weight of these trucks. And where we had roads that were passable for cars and pickups, they're not passable for these trucks, 'cause of this weather, they're totally destroying them. Come up with a better plan. I think we need to do some changes to, to make these oil companies liable for some of this, because down the line, it's gonna break us. 'Cause these roads are costing, to get material down, uh, just like I mentioned, this County Road three sixty, the oil companies getting material from New Brunswick for this road, they're gonna put eight inches of compacted material on this road. You're looking at, uh, about four hundred and ninety-five dollars a load to bring it in, although the oil companies get charged more than we do. But, uh, right now, our competition is bringing in material into the county. I spoke to Mr. Schimmel about it. He sees that, uh, the, what we have to pay for a truck to haul in our material to, you know, to Karnes County, because it's expensive. There's no material in the county to use. So we got a lot of issues, but out of, out of your commissioners, y'all know where y'all's precincts are at. What I'm asking is an input. Tell me the roads that y'all feel are more vital in your precincts, so we can get it on the list and saying, "This is what we're gonna follow." I want y'all's input too, because that is y'all's precincts. That is your constituents that live there.
Jeffrey, how, how many employees do you have currently?
We're down, we're back to, what, nine, ten, I think? We're nine, actually. We got one boy that's sick right now, so he, he's in and out.
And under the four precinct system, there was about eighteen?
Yeah.
So you're still at half, half the manpower?
Yes, sir. Half the manpower.
And I, I brought this up at, at budget time, and, and I was expressing my concerns to the court that, you know, although you may say you cannot compete with the oil companies, maybe you can. But if you don't, you're not gonna, why, why would anybody go to work for the county for, what do you pay, Jeffrey? Ten bucks?
We're starting off the employees at twelve dollars an hour.
Twelve dollars an hour? Why?
With the CDL.
You know, if somebody comes and applies with, with the county for twelve dollars an hour, and they can go across the street and make twenty, twenty-two dollars, there's something wrong with them. I mean, or, I mean, something wrong with the picture. Why would you do that to your family?
This is, this is the Road and Bridge report, but you're not comparing apples and apples and oranges to oranges. What they do is totally different than oil field work. I mean, driving a truck is not just driving a truck.
Money is money, though.
Money is money.
But you're also sacrificing things for money sometimes.
Well, I know, but that still doesn't address the problem that he's only got nine employees and he should have about eighteen.
Well, as long as, uh, as long as the oil field is gonna be in Karnes County and all the job opportunities out there, Karnes County's gonna suffer with employees. That's, that's just gonna be...
I said that, I said that early on, and nobody listened to me, and we're really gonna suffer. And a regular vehicle has four tires kicking up dust, throwing rocks, and eroding the road. Eighteen-wheelers got eighteen of them, plus, plus.
But this is not new. This did not just start happening this meeting. So, I mean...
But this is, I'm, I'm going at...
But we need, we need to start moving ahead with the plan, a plan for Road and Bridge. You and I discussed that, Jeff. I sent you the mirrors. I've sent you the people. Sit down, let's work, camera something out, and let's get going for the citizens. Let's go forward and get some of these roads fixed. You gotta feel, I mean, yes, this oil field activity is wonderful for some, and it's not wonderful for others. It's a dual-edged sword. If you're driving a compact car, and you want through a pothole and you can't get it fixed, who's gonna pay for it? So...
There's, there's some things that, uh, and, uh, I know you guys travel some of the roads. Mr. Schimmel, I know, travels a lot in his area there, and we did a bunch of work there. And they're still, you know, that precinct is destroyed a lot. There's more material in the bar digits than there is on roads. Y'all heard them say that before. It wasn't properly maintained, it wasn't properly taken care of, but, uh, when you start building roads, you're looking at a lot of, uh, money that's gonna get pumped in, because, to prepare a base road, because, uh, I'm gonna back up to a, to a little deal, the people, the, that the bond got voted in. I'm getting, I got phone calls the day after, and they said, "When are you gonna start paving roads?" Well, this was, and correct me if I'm wrong, this was guideline for base material, material to fix the county roads. To make a road hold up in this county right now, Hexxox is having a lot of problems, and if we try to build a road from scratch up to make, uh, the weight hold up, that three million dollars ain't gonna go very far. Maybe about three, four miles and we'll be broke. So the, the paving of roads is a wise thing to do. I'm gonna let the commissioners make that decision. I'm not gonna do it. If y'all want me to start paving roads somewhere, well, by God, we'll do it. But, uh, I think that'll be a total mistake right now, when we can't even get, keep our county roads alive and keep the public moving.
You remember when this first started, I told you that three million wasn't gonna, wasn't gonna touch it. It was gonna take thirty-something million to do the county road.
You're right.
With these three million dollars, Jeff, you're not, and you know, 'cause you've been in roads, and I did road for eight or nine years before the unit system came in, at the numbers you were giving me, that the oil companies are spinning on a mile and a half of roads, basically at three million dollars, you're gonna do, and each road's gonna be different. Each one's gonna take different coverage, you know that.
Yes, sir.
You know, as good as I do, you're gonna do about thirty-six miles. So which thirty-six miles of, with three million dollars of the full route are we gonna do? I know there's more than thirty-six miles.
Every precinct in this county is different on school bus routes, and I'm gonna try to get some maps made of showing the school bus routes, and then the heavily populated areas. When we flip pages, you'll be able to see through the, through the maps where our populated areas are at. Falls City School District is one of our biggest school districts that we have for school buses, because I got a list from everybody. Karnes City is the second biggest, then Kennedy, and then it's Runge. Runge is, I think, one of our smaller, I think... One school bus going out.
But one student. The way I look at it, I know Jeff's doing, doing a good job getting time. I'm talking about, for my precinct, he always jumps on it, he gets done and everything. I don't have a problem. But these three million dollars are gonna, you're gonna run through them like nothing. It's gonna make you look like you wasted the money. But it's really not gonna be you wasted the money. It's gonna be three million dollars is not gonna, I mean, it's gonna help.
It's gonna help.
It's gonna help. That's it. It's gonna be a patch. That's what it's gonna be. We, we need a thirty-something in it.
All we can do is patch now until this oil field traffic subsides, because otherwise, we're just throwing it away.
Right.
Right. And that's, that's kind of the deal that I'm talking about, and, and we tried, and, uh, we tried, because I did, did do us a list, got together with the foremen, and I said, "We're gonna do this. We're gonna stay on this road. We're gonna repair this road. And until we get done, we're gonna repair this road, and we're gonna follow the list of the school bus routes." Find out, we can't follow school bus, we can't follow the list, because every day, it's a different deal. This morning, I was gonna go do, we're gonna go try Gillette and start drying that road out. You can't drive a, a pickup down that road. It's too wet, it's too dry. We're moving a tractor in there. We're gonna try to plow it and try to dry it out. Reverse, we're going back to a road that we were working on two months ago. We're gonna try to get it hauling, we got trucks hauling over there. Tomorrow, it may change. I may have to run somewhere else to try to get school buses, the public, so they can get in and out. To follow, to follow a plan right now, it ain't gonna happen.
And I know, and I know some of the oil field companies have come in, and they, they've offered us money. We're gonna have to look at taking some of that in the future too, just to get this moving.
We're gonna have to. We need to take a look at the overall picture, what's happening, and, uh... Work with these companies where they...
We need to start right here. Twenty-five dollar permit for an oil well driven permit. We need to do a lot of that different.
Well, I'm going on the record of saying, I bet you in the next quarter or so, that you'll be down to four or five employees.
Well, we'll have...
These people aren't gonna work for that county.
Well, we'll have, I can't say, but, uh, I got a pretty, the crew that I got left right now is pretty dedicated. I made, uh, since Mr. Rios left, I, uh, I made, uh, Mr. Jalifka, Richard Jalifka, which is one of our younger employees, but Richard is an outstanding employee that'll jump in and do anything from picking up trash on the side of the road to a mechanic and to running a maintainer. The gentleman does anything I ask him to do, and he's sharp about his job. I made him one of my foremen's. So we, we're still running with two of the foremen's. I did give them a dollar an hour raise to put up with all the stuff, like this morning, Mr. Hansing here, Richard running the job while I'm gone. And, uh, Richard does help me, 'cause, uh, the other night, when, uh, Mr. Humble called me, we had a cave-in on County Road one sixty. So the bridge separated, and we got a cave-in. We haven't got to that yet. That road is, we got it blocked off. Traffic is going around it. Uh, we're, we're shorthanded. We're falling behind every day. Once the, my intentions are to tell you, I speak with y'all also about, once we start rolling, the county does start getting money from this, we may have to look out to hire contractors to give us hands to repair these roads, so we can keep the public rolling. So that, there's a lot of things we're gonna be looking this year at our budget when we're gonna be working, because we're gonna need to do something. Uh, we got a lot of local contractors here in the county that, that we may have to help and, uh, hire, hire them to give us a hand to fix these roads. But, uh, hiring trucks, we're spending a lot of money on, on, uh, on, uh, bringing in material, but, uh, we don't have the manpower. We don't have the equipment to do it, so, uh, that's one thing that we're looking at. After a rain like now, we got it starting to dry up, we could use fifteen maintainers to be running out there, but we don't have them, so... It's bad enough for me to have four maintainers running just with the operators I got. So we're, we're looking at a lot, at a lot of issues.
Need a gravel truck in front of the maintainer.
And we do that. Yes, sir. Anything else?
Do we need, and do you wanna have a planning meeting with us openly, Jeff? Do you just wanna bring us the plan? How do you wanna do that?
I can bring you all the plan. Like I said, I don't know if we'll be able to follow it.
Well, we still...
But I would still like the output from the commissioners. I would, I would like output from the commissioners, 'cause they know where their vital roads are at. I, I'm, I, the two years I've been here, I know where the vital roads are at, but I still want input from the commissioners to tell me where they think that we should concentrate more on. Now, the roads that are passable, 'cause I had one at a Mr. Yarres precinct, and he called me, and he said, "When it gets dry, the roads get rippled and then it gets rough." I said, "Do you get stuck? You go down and get stuck, and it's just rough?" Well, you're still getting out. How about the poor people that can't even get out for Christmas? That's the roads I'm concerned, frightened on now, get the public rolling, and that's the roads we have to fix. Especially if EMS was to be called out there. I don't wanna pull Shelby around in that, in that EMS unit. I'd rather him drive it.
Well, Jeffrey, aren't we, aren't we gonna spend equal portions in each precinct, like seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars in, in each precinct? Don't you think that's fair?
Well, like, uh, if you take and, uh, go to Mr. Yarres precinct, his precinct is not in the, as bad and need a shape as Mr. Schimmel's is in your precinct. So you might look at the, no, are we gonna split it equal? It's not probably gonna work out equal. This money belongs to Karnes County. I think we need to just start fixing roads.
I agree with that, Jeff. That's county money. It's not...
Yes, ma'am. It's county money. And we need to fix roads where they need to be fixed. Yeah, Pete's got some bad roads.
As long as I get more than my fair share.
James has got some roads that are terrible in his precinct. We got roads in every precinct that need repair.
Some are even the carefully traveled and others.
Right, exactly. You need to look at the population of your road. You need to look where, or which way are you going? And that's where we're going right now. I want the people to be able to drive out instead of them calling me. And, uh, "Can you come pull me out?" The people that deliver gas and butane to these people out in the, in the rural... I got a phone call yesterday. We had a butane truck stuck in the middle of the road. Joke on him. He said, "You got a maintainer out there?" "No, I don't." And, uh, we were twenty miles away from him to get a maintainer. Then when I went to get the maintainer, it didn't get him out, so it's, it's tough.
What county road was that?
It's outside of the, no man's land. He took the wrong turn.
Took the wrong turn. You should've called the tow truck.
Yeah.
That's what, I've heard of those two tracks.
I don't like pulling school buses around here.
No. Well, and, and we shouldn't be doing it.
Yeah, it's making fun. I don't...
Well, I'm sure they do. But, uh, we, we need to look at getting that, that first three million dollars spent, regardless of just the kick in the bucket, and we have to go back and get more.
It will, it will be a kick in the bucket.
We need, we need to get these roads fixed. People are begging us for roads. They're begging us to help them, and we need, we need to do that. We need to prioritize what, phone calls coming here, commissioners start bringing them to me now. They deliver these complaints to me. I mean, and not on paper, the people, so...
Our stack in office with the floors is about this tall.
I understand. We're gonna have to start moving to forward progression now.
We're knocking some of them down, but it's still...
Thanks, Jeff. We appreciate it. Lwana, you're next. My auditor's report.
On an added addendum...
Hold on, hold on. I messed my notes. I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Following up on Jeff's report, although we need help in the rural areas on the roads, we have to maintain a budget. We cannot change a budget that's adopted unless it's amended by emergency. Jeff did not mention to me, first time I heard it now, is that he gave raises. He can't do that. It's not within the budget. When we set the budget, we set salaries. You can't give raises within the year unless it's within your budget. If he plans on filling the fifteen full-time positions that he's got in his budget, he cannot give raises to existing employees. As you mentioned earlier, the treasurer's report and my report do match. I want to give y'all a explanation on the first page of the combined statement and receipts and disbursements. On the left-hand column, I have typed in as due by, the manual adjustments that were on the November thirtieth report. For the general funds, general certificate of obligation was four million, five seventy-eight, two ninety-eight, seventy-two. And for the crime stoppers, it was fourteen, three forty-five, ninety-eight. Those were manual adjustments on the reports. The adjustments in the system were made within December, so therefore, the closing balances, as shown on this report, are the accurate balances. On page eight of that report, I gave you that explanation in writing. You'll go to the Karnes County items of interest page. You'll notice that the total county funds available as of twelve thirty-one eleven were seven million, eight hundred and seventy-four thousand, six hundred and thirteen dollars and ninety-five cents. The total funds invested as of twelve thirty-one eleven was one million, two hundred and four dollars, five hundred and seventy-six dollars and twenty cents. One million, two hundred and four thousand, five seventy-six, twenty. Non-invested funds as of twelve thirty-one was six point six million. We did put out a new certificate of deposit on January sixth for six point nine, almost seven million dollars, which included receipts through January fourth, two thousand and twelve, so that's why it's more than what shows as non-invested as of December thirty-first.
We put out the new CD on January fourth?
Sixth.
Sixth?
But the receipts through the fourth are included in that CD. We did receive our grant reimbursements from ACOG on a household hazardous waste event in the amount of nine thousand, three hundred and sixty dollars and sixty-eight cents, and on the recycle center in the amount of thirty-seven thousand, seven hundred and sixty dollars. In this bill cycle y'all just approved, there was a payment to Texas CompuFix, who is Jeff Ramos, and his partner, Rick, uh, I can't think of his last name. The total bill is for four thousand, three hundred and ten dollars. Of that, three thousand dollars was the cost to establish an emergency connection between the sheriff's department and the old annex to continue the operation of the software through Tyler Technology. That was done on December twentieth, which is after the court had approved to amend the budget to change software providers in tune of forty-seven thousand, five hundred dollars. So the sheriff's office currently is up and operational through the software for Tyler Technologies with that three thousand dollar adjustment to hand to us.
Lwana, when, when are they gonna switch over to Hill County?
I have no earthly idea. You'd have to stay there. Uh, and then the final page is interest revenue for the year, the calendar year. I've previously given it to you for the fiscal year, but this is through the calendar year, and that also does match the dollar amount reported by the treasurer.
And just to clarify a little bit on the CDs, we brought a major CD in on December twenty-eighth or twenty-ninth. That six million dollars was not sitting around doing nothing. We brought in four or five, four and a half million dollar CD. So don't think it was sitting there not there.
When was that one? Bye. When?
The twenty-seventh or twenty-eighth of Jan, uh, December.
So the money wasn't vested, Bye?
Yes, until the... Fourth, whatever, seventh of January?
Sixth.
That, thank you.
So you're getting interest on that one right now? So it just wasn't sitting idle?
Right. Right.
Anything else? Anybody have any questions for LaWanna? Is that, are you giving her an audit report?
Uh-huh.
Okay, 'cause I wrote online. Thank you. Personnel policies, Coral?
There's no changes to the personnel policy.
Um, annex P?
Well, the crew are accepted to, I think we voted on here at court sometime early December, they accepted, sent back, working there physically, some of the tanks done. And they were doing, working on the courtroom, uh, judge's bench, jury box, elevated jury box. They said they'll probably be here next week, starting on the concrete outside. Thank you, after the call. They wanted to, spotted it on the floor yesterday, and I was there with crew of people checking the seating up above, it was in the hallway right by the county clerk's door. We found no dampness on the wall. Within two hours after the rain, no dampness at all on the wall or the seating anywhere. Took a, my handkerchief and pocket knife, and stuck it in that seating grid up there, and we couldn't find where it was, so where the water came from, we don't know. Of course, the threshold in the, in the break room was leaking. We had to delete that on my list of seventeen items I gave them, and, uh, we discussed ways to try to fix it. Hopefully, we'll, uh, get things completed, and then next month.
By then, we'll get a, we can give everything to LaWanna, submit, to submit a total cost for the annex. We should be done, signed, delivered. Is that all we're waiting on, LaWanna? Is that all you're waiting on? It's just us to be finished?
Correct. The law payments are issued.
Um, Tracy? No, I skipped James, I'm sorry. James, I'm sorry.
Yeah, it's all right. I talked to Mr. Ortiz again about the, all that wood and that pile that we have over there, and he told me he couldn't let us burn it, but we came to an agreement. And then I talked to Jeff about getting a tractor over from him here in the next couple of weeks, he's gonna go in there, and I told him, Mr. Ortiz, if we separated them into five or six piles, we could burn them separately, and we pull out some of the bad stuff that's in there he doesn't want burnt. He said that he'd come back and reevaluate that, but Jeff's not gonna be able to go and help us till about two to three weeks. But as soon as he goes and helps us, I'm gonna call Mr. Ortiz back, he's gonna come back, he's gonna reevaluate it, and hopefully, he allows us to burn. I'll let y'all know.
We'll, we have to get a permit.
Yeah. But I'll let y'all know what's, all that's...
How many piles do we have to put there?
Six. Five to six, just kind of, whenever you go out there, give me a call, we'll go out there, but just by the way it looks, they don't have to be that small, but maybe five to six, because Mr. Ortiz said that's way too big, it's dangerous to burn something that big. I mean, I'm sure if you burn something like that, within three or four hours, it's down, but he's, you know, is he accused of...
It, it's a problem that when Jesse's taking the money and doing the paperwork, and then they go dump, and then another one drives up, and you can't always see what they have. Would it make sense to hire a second employee to be down there watching them, what they dumped, and where they dumped it?
I, well, I mean, yeah, of course, it'd be great, but I went out there...
Avoid this problem.
I went out there and I helped Jesse a number of times, and if he has to leave an Albert or something, I go over there and I run it for him. And when I'm sitting there, it's hard, when you're there, you can't go, I mean, you just have to trust the people, that's what we, to hire another employee, I don't think it'd be worth it. But, yeah, I mean, of course, it'd be better, but he's gonna be standing around, or she's gonna be standing around out there, what, maybe an hour, two hour before anybody else comes in? I would, and there's no way that Jesse or anybody that works there can, uh, do the office and go out there and see what they're throwing. And whenever they're bringing in the traders, you just kind of, you know, you look at the top, but these people are, you know, they're, they're pretty sharp, they can have stuff, yeah, they can have stuff shoved under them.
Like drug smugglers.
Trash smugglers.
Tracy, I'm sorry, J, uh, J G, done?
Turn around, you keep...
Yeah.
Nah, go ahead, I'm done.
Tracy?
Okay, uh, for the month of December, we took in about twenty-three thousand in permits, and from March, when I started, to December thirty-first, we're taking in a little over two hundred and thirty-three thousand. So, we ought to be able to put some of that in the road and bridge situation and try to help out some of that problem.
We're done with reports, next one, La...
What, Judge? Uh, in regards to the courthouse restoration project, I got a call from the contractor yesterday about a bunch of boxes and whatnot in the attic, and I called Commissioner Yauer, and he said, yeah, you know, and they needed to be shredded, and we just never got it shredded. And so, I called Mr. Yanta, and he said, we can't use road and bridge employees to do work like this, and, you know, there's nobody else to do it. So, he agreed to go over there and move the, it might've been ninety or a hundred boxes and all kinds of stuff over there in the, in the, we knew it's gonna be removed. He, he put it on the other side of the elevator, you know, permanent part, and at some point, we're gonna have to get a shredding machine, get that stuff out of there.
Just let us know, so we can put it on the agenda. Did the ladies have a chance to go through and determine if they wanted or did not want?
They went through everything, we separated what they designated to be safe, it was sacked in the old courtroom, it was taken out of there. They supposedly have all that out of the courtroom.
There's nothing in there that we need, there's no, there's no records that belong to them that need to be...
It was all gone through, and they said that was all to be shredded.
Okay.
We have, sorry, we have money in the budget for sh, for major shredding again this year, so we're just kinda letting everybody, we're just gonna wait until the boxes...
For that shredded machine thing you ordered, Bob?
No, no, it's, uh...
It's a contract.
It's a contract we used last year, they come in, free a big truck, and they shred it. I just didn't wanna do it too soon, just want everybody to get a chance to make sure...
Right, everybody get, get their pick, we're gonna have some stuff to shred.
Shred, yeah, so that's, it's...
Thank you, Guy.
Guy, when, when, when the shredded machine comes, when those people come, they're not gonna go to the third floor, no, they're not gonna go up in the attic and pack these boxes down. We're probably gonna have to hire Mr. Yanta again, or somebody to pack them down, and...
Just let us know, we'll let, we'll set it up.
Is that right, team?
Yeah, we talked about using, like, the juveniles.
If they can go in there while it's under construction, and it's in their minds, what am I saying?
Oh.
Not want somebody to get hurt on my time.
All right.
So, we'll, we'll think, we can plan it out as we go along and figure something out. Does anybody else have anything on reports? I make, next item on the agenda is to adjourn, I make a motion, we adjourn.
I'll second it.
Made by Shaw, seconded by everybody. Which one?
Hummel.
Hummel, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five zero, no opposition.
You're off the record.
Ladies and gentlemen, thank you for coming.